You got to find grandchildren, I'd say two seconds, they start counting, one, two. Okay, I apologize, thank you.
Six thirty in two seconds. I'll open up the August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three town of Bradley Town Council meeting. All town councils are present, as well as town manager Will Stone, Fire Chief Beard is here as well. And I will make a motion to accept the town council minutes from the August first, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded from the meetings for the last meeting, any questions, comments, changes there? If not, well, Jim, Duane, Charlie, Larry, Mark, and I. And you jumped on the management report. Is there citizenship question?
There should be citizenship question, yeah.
Well, any citizenship, citizenship request, we'll jump to that first. Citizenship requests.
Okay.
Management report, right.
Okay, um, so you heard that it's we're recording, Councilor Hatch had suggested that we add to our website a town council meeting schedule, agenda, like a, a link that provides all of our meeting dates. And also to add recordings to the town website because not everybody has Facebook. So I'm going only to attempt to do that tonight. And so if you go to our webpage, our website, townofbradley.net, and then at the very top is municipal meetings. And that's where we list all of our town council members and we have our town council minutes posted there. But now we're going to add a link to have these recordings, hopefully, so.
So it's outside of Facebook Live?
It will be outside of Facebook Live, yeah. Um, so we'll see how that goes. And let's see, the tax billings were mailed out before, I think just shortly after our last meeting on the eighth. This far, I haven't received any questions or any comments on the tax billing. Um, we do have one abatement in which I gave you that information. I'm therefore requesting that the town council would approve an abatement for one twenty high point place. Um, the homestead exemption was left out for this tax year, we're not really sure what happened because they had done it the prior year. So the abatement amount is for twenty thousand dollars for the homestead exemption with a tax value of three hundred and thirty dollars.
I made a motion to approve the abatement. Seconded, motion's been made and seconded, approve the abatement for one twenty high point place, Bradley, any questions, comments? If not, well, Larry, Charlie, Duane, Jim, Mark.
Um, the fall cleanup has been scheduled for Saturdays, September twenty-third. Um, same procedures as we have had for the last several cleanups. Residents will come in and pay fifteen dollars and they'll be allowed to dispose of two loads of debris. April will be onsite to verify that they have purchased the fifteen dollar fee and verify that they own, are doing a minimum of two loads. And the time will be from seven thirty in the morning to one o'clock afternoon, same place, the eighty-sixth Main Street.
Any electronic waste?
No electronic waste at this time. Um, there is a facility that residents can take electronic waste, I think it's like a small donation or a small fee. And that facility is located behind Dice Arts in Herman, there's, Casella Waste operates a disposal, electronic disposal site there.
Oh, that's good, Dice Arts in Herman.
Dice Arts in Herman, yeah, it's actually, I think it's, I've never been there, but like the Challenger Learning Center has a event that each year and that's who, who does the disposal, so. Um. And let's see, though I talked to John Hammer, our municipal attorney, um, again regarding one fourteen Cram Street, just an update on that situation, he requested that our plumbing inspector, um, request an inspection of the property because under state statute, plumbing inspectors have authority to request an onsite inspection. And then if they don't get an inspection, then they can go forward with a court proceedings, like we had originally talked about doing. Um, so I sent, uh, Phil came in and met with me, I wanted to make sure he was comfortable with that. Phil works with us on a very limited basis, he comes to town, not very frequently, he only issues plumbing permits when we, when it's needed. So I wanted to make sure he was willing to do that, obviously we'll pay him an hourly rate for his time, but. Um, so he did, I did send him some documentation regarding the property that talks about the having no water and the new resolution that there may not be a working subject system. And so he's contacted main D E P and he has spoken to Mr. Hammer, our attorney. And I talked to him this morning and he will be writing, sending a letter tomorrow, certified mail, requiring that, requesting that they have an inspection of the property within ten days. So that's the update on that, we still do have a court hearing on September thirteenth for the land use violations. So we're obviously still moving forward with that as well.
What time is that one missing?
I haven't received a time yet.
Okay. Well, the plumbing inspection, the subject system inspection, is that gonna mean, um, the station inside the house or just outside?
Inside.
Inside.
Yeah.
When you, when you learn about the September thirteenth hearing, will you let me know?
Yeah, I sure will, I'll let, I'll ask that council meeting, yeah.
Or, I mean, just, you know, thinking about, um, that inspection going in the house, I mean, do we, yeah, how's that gonna work?
I know, I doubt it's gonna happen, I doubt it will happen, I think we're gonna have to move forward with a court proceeding. But we, Mr. Hammer wants us to go all of those avenues before we go through a court proceeding.
Okay.
Um, let's see, I signed, um, a couple weeks ago, the municipal road, uh, this snow removal for the municipal road, that contract has been signed and completed, so we're all set for snow removal on municipal roads. Um, it was for the budget amount of fifty-one thousand dollars.
Same provider?
Same provider, yeah, Greg Harvey, yeah. I talked to Peter Currier, who has been doing our municipal and fire station parking lots since the building was built. Um, and he has agreed to do the snow removal for the budget amount of eleven thousand five hundred. I sent him out a contract, I haven't received it yet, I sent him a message today reminding him to do so, but those are all taken care of for the winter. Which will be in Florida. Um, nomination papers for the one position on the school board, the R S U school board are now available. The papers are available now, they're due back on October third for the November seventh election. Uh, the board seat that's becoming vacant is that of Howard Jack, so if you know anybody who's interested in having a school board, the process has started.
Was it term up or is, was it?
It's a term, yeah. It will every, it's a three-year term.
Is there any advanced knowledge, if he may go for it again?
He has come and taken our papers, yeah. So earlier, uh, last week, I believe, I sent you some pictures of our cemeteries, of Evergreen and Knapp Cemetery. Um, I wanted to just give you the pictures so you could kind of know what I'm talking about this evening because it's not like we can go further than four. But, um, in Evergreen, I would like to see if I could get town council to approve removing, um, ten armored trees that are dead. Um, you can see from the pictures, they're, they're quite dead and they're, I'm afraid that they're going to fall and do damage to the stones. Um, the cost to remove these trees is fifty-five hundred dollars and that involves getting a lift, a chipper, and obviously the labor. We have, um, a trust of cemetery trust account, Carter Cemetery Trust, which was established in nineteen sixty-two. The family gave the town of Bradley five thousand dollars to take care of their plots for fraternity, which we do. Um, the funds, um, that are in that account right now are twenty-six thousand seven thirty-two. So therefore we have twenty-one thousand seven thirty-two available to do repairs to Evergreen Cemetery. The trust documents state that it has to be Evergreen Cemetery, so if the town council would approve it, I would remove the fifty-five hundred dollars from that trust account to redo the tree work.
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, uh, approve that contract.
That's a second.
Motion's been made, seconded to do the tree removal at the Evergreen Cemetery for the cost of fifty-five hundred, you said?
Yes.
Does that include the stump grinding as well, just getting everything else?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the motion at hand?
Um, yes, um, I do thought about maybe using the University of Maine Foresty program and whether or not that's something.
I have not, I haven't, I have not.
Save fifty-five hundred dollars, that's something.
Yeah, I worry about, I can definitely come, come and ask about that, I just, I, those trees have really gotten a lot worse over this past summer and I just worry about the winter and fall, yeah. Um, but that is definitely something I can do and for sure think about in the future for tree work, yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the motion at hand? Well, Jim, Duane, Charlie, Larry, Mark.
And the other pictures I sent you were of Knapp Cemetery, which is located on the main road in Bradley. And, um, I wanted to, the, there's a family plot at the cemetery, it's the Knapp family plot. And all of their family is gone, nobody's taking care of that area. And so it's grown up quite a bit, and so I wanted to see about getting that cleaned up, just really moving, uh, the brush and some trees that have come down. And also, the cemetery is one of the first cemeteries in Bradley, so it's really old. But there's a part of the cemetery, the back line of the cemetery, to an old fence that I also would like to have cleaned out and brushed out, and the cost of that is six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, we don't have any trusts for Knapp Cemetery, unfortunately. So I was going to ask if town council would consider, um, we had budgeted in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, the current year, five thousand dollars for cemetery restoration, we were going to have a company come in and work on our veterans' graves. And that company is not going to be able to do that this year. Um, so I wanted to see about expending some of that money on the cleanup of, uh, Knapp Cemetery. I also gave you pictures of an area in Knapp Cemetery that is overtaken by bamboo. And I had the bamboo trimmed and removed, but it's comes back just as fast as you can trim it. So I got, I asked three contractors to go look at it and I have one contractor that said that they will give me a price, but he hasn't, I just went and looked at it again with him today, so I don't have a price for that, for that part.
It looks like some of that bamboo's been cut this year.
Yes, I, I did have it cut this year and, uh, that was in an invoice that you would pay, uh, fifteen. But it just grows back year after year and it just really looks, it looks terrible.
Are they thinking it needs to be dug up by the roof or something?
I met with John Milligan today and he's, obviously John does a lot of work for the town. And he was suggesting digging, um, digging it out, luminant and reseating it. And we watched, as much as we could, I bet, I was down there on Sunday with a contractor and there's a large, large, uh, hornet's nest down there. So we walked very gingerly today, but, yeah.
Whoever does it's gotta get combat.
Yeah, 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 and there's some stones that are in those bamboo, you know, yeah, so.
Absolutely nasty, if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna dig it up, is there room to maybe add some more?
There could, and that's kind of what John and I talked about today, the bamboo on the backside, you know, there's like six or eight feet, you know, probably twenty feet long, so that would actually add some more cemetery plots if, if we were able to get that cleaned up and mowable, per se. So I don't really have anything to give you for that tonight, that would be something in the future. But, um, the trimming of the family plot and the trimming of the tree line area was the six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Melissa, tell me some more about the outfit that is going to come and look at the stone, they're not gonna be able to do it.
Yes, so this company, I met with them a couple of years ago and they, they're ill, one of them has, uh, illness. And, um, they're hopeful that next year they'll be able to come. But they only do a limited time in each community because they're sought after. And so they only want like a five thousand dollar line item each year, they don't expect a town, they could never come and do a whole cemetery because they promised themselves to other cemeteries throughout the state.
So we appropriated that money when?
It's in this current budget.
Okay, and the next budget would be July first next year.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And you have no idea what it's gonna cost on the bamboo?
I don't, it may not be something that we can afford to do, honestly, I don't, I don't really know.
Do we need to do something about it tonight?
No, we can't do anything about it tonight because I don't know how much it's gonna cost.
Well, if we did up to.
Yeah. That's totally up to town council.
It'd be nice too, and that driveway down there is tough as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be, that would be a lot more money.
Yeah, oh, having a driveway installed.
Yeah, it's something a little bit different, I mean, it's there.
Yeah.
So we've got one at six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
If we were to approve something up to perhaps twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Is that something that you could foresee might work?
I would love for that to work, but I don't know if it will, I don't know how much work is involved in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just thinking about the timing, you know, with the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
If we wait much longer, it might even dig the ground.
Yeah, yeah, town council could approve me expending up to X amount on that project. And then if it's more than that, I would have to come back to the council.
Again, for the bamboo just picturing there, is it gonna be on the, alongside the driveway or the road end?
When you first come down, it's right in front.
Right in front, yeah.
And then off to, when you first come down, it's off, it would be towards the village side, the right side of the cemetery as a whole, like it looks like a, I don't know, it's a curved type area where the bamboo's all in, and that's actually where there's like four or five, I found some stones in there.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, approve the expenditure of six hundred and seventy-five dollars for, is it trimming?
Trimming, yeah.
And up to twenty-five hundred dollars for the bamboo. Seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Again, we just want, so it's six hundred and fifty-five plus twenty-five, plus twenty-five. That bamboo is an insidious thing, it's gotta go away. I mean, it's gonna cost money to do it. Would we have to do any tapping, like you said, if you found just going through there, a few stones, to make sure that there aren't?
We talked about it today and he seemed to think that he could go in there. You know, that they'd probably do some handwork at first to kind of just feel around. Um, and then dig gingerly in an area, that area, yeah. Um, and if we found a stone, we would obviously replace it, the chances of finding anything, we're not gonna go that deep, I don't know how deep things are buried in the eighteen hundreds, but, you know, our hope would be that we wouldn't be doing anything inappropriate.
Do our current maps of the Knapp Cemetery not show the lots?
Though I looked today, one of them I did find, it was a pretty big stone, I found it on the map, the two and deeper, I did not see those on the map.
The additional money that, um, that's been motioned, uh, put towards this project, um, are we saying that she would, uh, be able to use that as a, um, same starting point? Or working with contractors to be able to say, I have this, or, you know, can you work with me here? Or we need something more like getting more, um, contract bids?
My, my vision of it would be that, uh, we'll get it done as cheaply as we can.
Right.
Uh, but up to twenty-five hundred, if it's over twenty-five hundred, I guess we better talk again.
Oh, yeah, for sure, and I have contacted four contractors and I've only, I, I had one come and look at it, but I don't wanna do it.
Because I'm nervous saying, I can do it to twenty-five hundred dollars and it'd be terrible.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm only nervous just there, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The contractor that I spoke to today, John Milligan, he does a lot of work for us around town and he does a top-notch job. If he was to give us a bid that was higher, I would come back, if he was to give us a bid that was lower than this, I would be tickled because I know that he would do a really good job for us.
Any other questions or consideration for the motion at hand? If not, well, Jim, Duane, Charlie, Larry, Mark.
Um, at the last meeting, I think we talked about, or maybe it was a week before, we feel like I haven't seen you guys forever, but, um, the, we talked about the policies that I had to, um, create in order for us to be eligible for the main workers' cost safety incentive program. And you did approve a handful of policies that I had to create. Um, Eric and I met with the representative a couple of weeks ago and we have been, um, we have been approved for the highest tier of discount, which is a ten percent discount on our workers' comp program. But we have to come up with these additional policies, which I just gave you today, and I apologize. But, so if you could, over the next couple of weeks, uh, review them and then we can talk about them and hopefully approve them at our next meeting. The policies include a safety committee, um, which is kind of silly because I can't even get people to run the town council, never mind the safety committee, but, um, so you'll see in the policy, I kind of created a program in which Eric and I annually will review each of our policies and review it with our staff, which we, and we just didn't have it in a policy. Uh, return to work policy, which is pretty standard for every, uh, any type of business. We're required to have a wellness program, um, which was hard to do because, well, because I don't feel like I should be able to tell, tell my staff what to eat or how to exercise or whatever. But I created a little document that talks about some of the programs that we currently offer through our health insurance program. And then, um, they wanted, main municipal wanted us to use pervert providers for it first injuries. When a, when a person is injured, they would go to a pervert provider, which we would outline for them, which is in our personnel policy. I added that to our personnel policy. So that's what I created, and again, if you could kind of review that and we could discuss it at our September twelfth meeting, that would be that.
What about the whistle warriors thing, Melissa, that was in my box?
That's, that is part, that page is from our personnel policy and the, the italic is what I added. And I think I wrote a note, that's a page for our personnel policy, did I not?
Yeah.
And if you want the full policies on our website, or I can obviously print it off for you. It's quite a lengthy document, so I didn't wanna print it off for those five or six lines. Um, and I think that's all I have for my town management report.
Any other questions or comments on the management report for this evening? If not, we'll jump down to the business, business for you, Melissa.
Um, so I did provide in front of you, Mark, a, the town council needs to approve and sign our twenty-twenty-three municipal valuation return, which is a document that is in our commitment book and is sent to main revenue service, which outlines our valuation numbers for the town of Bradley. And that's what puts the information into the system at the state of Maine level for our revenue sharing, um, reimbursement and our homestead reimbursements and, um, at state aid education reimbursement, so just need to have town council approve and sign that.
And that's part of, that was part of the big book?
That was part of the big book, which you already signed in the big book, but this is the one that we send to main revenue service. And then additionally, I also need to have town council's approval for the twenty-twenty-three Penobscot County assessors return. In this evening's warrant, you'll see our check to Penobscot County for our county tax. And they require the town council's signature on that return form.
You need a motion for each?
Uh, sure, or in, whatever, together or each.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve both, the main revenue services, two thousand twenty-two municipal evaluation return documentation, as well as the assessors' return for the county tax. Motion's been made, seconded, any questions on those items? Well, Jim, Duane, Charlie, Larry, Mark. Melissa, in this regard, you just jogged my memory, yeah, I was supposed to come in and sign the tax payment book.
Yeah.
I didn't do it.
Okay, well, I'll grab you tonight, I have my own.
Any other new business for you, Melissa?
I know.
Any new business from the council? Okay, jump down to unfinished business. Any unfinished business?
So at our last meeting, I had provided town council with, um, some information about, um, health insurance, uh, uh, short-term disability insurance for our employees. And I gave you that with hopes that you would review it while you were on vacation. And I was wondering if you did and if you had to make answer additional questions for me.
I, I, I looked at it, um, and I guess one, one of the first questions I had was under the Aflac offerings, they have short-term disability and then they have like cancer protection, twenty-four hour accident, hospital choice. I guess my question was, why was it, why were those all separate? Wouldn't short-term disability cover somebody who's out for, for cancer services or an accident?
I think those are additional, additional insurances that Aflac offers. So if you receive a cancer diagnosis, you're eligible for that cancer insurance.
Could it be above and beyond the short-term disability, short-term plus, okay.
Yeah, 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 uh, hospital choice, uh, that was kind of explained to me about like if an employee was to have a child and they know that they're going into the hospital, then they would get that benefit, if you knew you were going in for something, you would know that you would get that benefit. Those are additional ones that they provided to us. To be honest, none of our staff are really interested in those benefits, but they just gave us that information. My thought was that the main municipal health trust income protection plan was better than the Aflac plan. It seemed to be less expensive, um, it's already through our health trust, which we participate with. They offered three tiers of forty percent, fifty percent, and seventy percent, um. And I think that it offered a longer payout than Aflac was for six months. And I believe that main municipal was up to a year.
What doing the Aflac one constitutes a new contract?
Yeah, yeah.
And with the main municipal, we can just increase our level?
That's correct, yeah.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be the main municipal health trust at the very minimum forty percent, maybe up to fifty percent. And the additional funds that we have budgeted, I would put into the health insurance reimbursement program that the staff, um, participates in.
So it has to be the forty or fifty?
Yes. And then the other, you know, because they, if we did forty, if we did forty percent, um, and the employees wanted to do fifty percent or twenty percent, they could pay the difference, but the town would just pay that minimum a month.
You happen to know what the difference is off the top of your head between forty and fifty?
Well, forty percent for all of them is fourteen ninety-three, forty percent, fifty percent, so it's fifty percent is two thousand fifty-two ninety-six for all.
Actually, it's the.
That's divided by three. So it's, it's not, it's not the same.
Got laundry bums. Couple hundred bucks.
And then again, if we offered the fifty and they wanted to go to the seventy, they too could contribute to get to the higher level.
I think I'd make a motion for the fifty. Second. Uh, motion has been made seconded for adding, is it, is it a difference changing?
It is, yeah.
Um.
Short term.
Short term visibility under the main employees' health trust program for fifty percent. At the fifty percent level, I mean. Any other questions or comments?
That wasn't seconded. Was it?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dwayne didn't. Any other questions or comments? On the motions? If not, we will vote, Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Thank you. I almost got that process. And that felt like my, my business.
Any unfinished business from the council, please? Not, uh, I will jump down to making a motion to accept the municipal warrants as they were presented this evening?
Second.
Motion's been made in second as all the warrants for this evening. Any questions on those at all? Already answered the question with the big bill for two hundred and eleven thousand.
Twenty.
Um. We'll vote on those, Jim?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
I guess one other quick thing I forgot to mention, how did the uh, the bike race?
I didn't have, I was away on vacation and I never received any calls or anything, so I'm assuming it went well.
Yeah, they were in town.
Yeah.
On the roads. I came by several times and it was good crap, yeah.
Oh, good, yeah, um, usually I have to deal with a porta potty and I didn't even have to do that.
Hold on the next.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next meeting is set for two weeks from today. September twelve, wow. If you can't make it. Please let the town office.
I just looked on Facebook and I didn't see any comments on Facebook.
Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn to you, may that.
Second.
I know. Charlie and Larry, it's nine, those ones.
And I'll grab the commitment books for you.